City County Planning Commission Meeting, come to order please. Ms. Martin, will you call the roll?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Coppinger?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Houston?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Runner?
Everyone has a copy of the minutes from last meeting. Time to review. Are there any corrections, changes? If not, I'll ask for a motion.
It's moved.
Second.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Coppinger?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Houston?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Houston, I request that you order the record to include all statutory and regulatory provisions, commissions, and tire file for each application and the qualifications of each staff witness. Finally, I request that you ask that you administer the oath to each of the staff.
Do you also want to tell the truth?
Yes, sir.
Got a financial report. Does anyone have any questions or additions to that? Nothing? Preliminary subdivision approvals and site development plans? Any questions? No questions? Letters of credit and performance bonds? Do we have any questions? Any of the commissioners? No?
We'll need a motion to approve those.
May it be approved, please?
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Coppinger?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Houston?
Yes, ma'am. We have a withdrawal on the Stagner Farms. If there's anyone in the audience with that, we will not be hearing that case tonight. And our first case will be under old business, 2009, 2002 Z County. Johnny Britt and James Cook have filed an application to rezon tracks of land containing approximately 2.96 acres located at 2071 Goshen Church Roads, south, from agriculture to RE residential estate with a general development plan.
Thank you, Chair Houston. We had a pre-application conference for this property you see here on October 8th of last year. The applicants this evening wish to divide the property into two single-family lots. Chair Houston has already given the zoning information on that property. This property's been zoned agriculture as far as our records show, and the current use is single-family, and around there is mostly agriculture and single-family with some vacant tracks. Okay. So this property is designated, I will go back just one, as agriculture on the future land use map because this property is a non-conforming agricultural parcel that is less than five acres in size, and only one new lot is being created. The applicants do not have to amend the future land use map. The proposed RE zone is a potentially compatible zoning designation in the agriculture flume category and may be appropriate if this body determines that the proposed development is compatible with the surrounding area. On the first page of your staff report, I'll just note there that there are generally adequate facilities and infrastructure other than adequate water to meet the fire control standards, but we'll touch on that again in a second. There is a small existing wetland located toward the northeastern portion of the property. At the bottom there, you see the points to consider. Again, that this is exempt from the flume and compliance with that agriculture, future land use designation because it's a non-conforming ag parcel and only one new lot's being created. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria, and the proposed general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and compatibility and meets the minimum requirements of the zoning ordinance. Going on to page two, just point out a couple things under the site characteristics review. The water adequacy, I just mentioned that there is not adequate flow to meet the fire protection requirements, but the number of lots proposed is less than five, so it's exempt from this requirement. Below that wastewater, there's an existing septic system on the property, and a new residence would also use an onsite septic system. There's a large sinkhole along the west portion of the property and a smaller sinkhole on the northeastern portion of the property. The property is comprised of a soil type. It's classified as very limited regarding soil suitability for septic tank absorption fields, and there is a wetland, as I already mentioned, on the northeastern portion. Going on to page three, I do want to note under the building materials review, there is an existing manufactured home on the property that you can probably see in the aerial there, and we'll get back to that in just a second when I do the staff review. Going on to the development plan conditions, I'll read through those real quickly. Number one, each lot shall obtain a permit from the health department for a septic system. Number two, the existing residents will utilize the existing septic system, and if the residence is ever replaced, the health department shall inspect the system or issue a permit for a new one. Number three, the majority of the existing trees located on the property will be maintained to the greatest extent feasible during future development. Number four, any new single-family residence shall have at least 1100 square feet. Number five, any new residence must be constructed of vinyl siding, brick, stone, concrete-based siding, or other modern masonry materials. Number six, deals with proposed driveways coordinated with Warren County Public Works. Number seven, any development will occur outside the wetlands. Number eight, any development will occur outside the sinkholes. And number nine, any new residence shall have a foundation of brick veneers, brick, or stone. So going on to page four, the focus 2030 category review, of the items we evaluated, everything was in compliance with the exception of some that are up to you. The first would be LU113, LU2 also, about if it's a high-quality development that was standards tailored to preserve the character of the area. Going down to the bottom, NCR241, if it's located in an area where infrastructure already exists and will not result in an increased amount of development pressure on the countryside. And HN21 and HN4, if it's a suitable housing type, and if the housing types are believed to enhance the array of housing options available in the area. So going on to page five, I mentioned the manufactured home. The existing home on the property now is proposed to remain. It was formerly a mobile home, but has been modified to meet building code and zoning ordinance requirements to be classified as a manufactured home. And you'll see there that, just to reiterate, that this property is exempt from flume compliance. They're wanting to create two lots, and so it's up to you all to determine if the proposal is compatible with the area. That is all I have, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Can you tell by the plat where the driveway is being proposed?
There is a current driveway. I know it's kind of hard to see. I'll have to look at this. The current driveway, I know it's kind of hard to see on there, but there's access here, and then some, well, the light's going out, some gravel maybe right there. But any new access point would be coordinated with Warren County Public Works as the applicant has stated in their development plan conditions.
Is it accurate to state that even if their existing driveway is at that location and the, who did you say they have to coordinate with?
Warren County Public Works.
And Warren County Public Works does a site assessment and decides to move it, they would move it to the new location. Is that accurate?
I mean, yeah, any proposed driveway, they've got to coordinate with Warren County Public Works.
Commissioners have any other questions? Does applicant have anything to add? I could get your name and address.
James Cook, 2071 Goshen Church Roads.
Swear to tell the truth. Swear to tell the truth.
Swear to tell the truth.
Thank you, sir.
Yes. Everything's pretty self-explanatory. It's just that I've been there about all my life, and finally got my people to talk into selling me the land, and I had to get all this approved by you all, and it's something that I've taken care of and put a lot of work into. And I hope you all approve the zoning. Basically, there's no changes to be made, other than what she has read to you all. And basically, that's about all I have to say.
Thanks, sir.
Got a question from Mr. Cook.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Mr. Cook, do you know how far this property is from the nearest GAT Fire Department?
Um, three to four miles.
Okay. I thought you were inside five miles, but I didn't have a chance to call GAT today to confirm that.
Three to four miles.
Okay. Thank you.
Sir, I have a question too. It looks like a paddle, the way the property is, and there's like a handle down here. That's just the way the property is cut? I mean, you're not going to use a driveway or anything there off Bethel Lane?
Ma'am, there would be no driveway on Bethel Lane.
Okay. It'll be in the curve instead of the?
Yes, ma'am.
Is there a sight distance problem with that curve? Have you ever noticed?
There have been a sight distance problems. Nothing blocking the curve. I mean, it's very open to see. There's never been a problem on that curve. And basically, the driveway itself comes in off the blacktop driveway into a gravel driveway, so you basically have two driveways with one feeding into another.
Thanks, sir. Anyone in the audience have any questions? Is there any opposition to this? Anything else from the commissioners? We'll call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the proposed zoning map amendment together with and condition upon the general development plan, docket number 2019-2Z County, based upon testimony and documents presented at this public hearing. The proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with the adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with objectives and actions presented in this staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Coppinger?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Houston?
Yes, ma'am. We will forward this on with approval. Thank you. Our next hearing is 2019, 17ZBG, DKB Investments, and Brunson Spears have filed an application to rezon a tract of land containing approximately 5.58 acres located at the end of Orange Court from agriculture to highway business to highway business with a general development plan. And Rachel?
Thank you, Chair Houston. We had a pre-application conference on March 21st for the property outlined in yellow, located at the end of Orange Court. You can see Scottsville Road is just to the southwest there on your screen. The current zoning of the property is split zone, currently highway business and agriculture. You can see there are several commercial properties situated along Scottsville Road and along Cumberland Trace Road as well. The current use of the property is agriculture. You can see there are also several commercial uses along Scottsville Road. Greenwood High School is located to the south there in the green shaded area, and then there's also some single-family uses and multifamily in the area as well. The future land use designation for the property is split, but the majority of the property is designated as commercial. So our comprehensive plan does say that when there is a split designation, if it's under a certain size, that we would just defer to the majority of the property. So we're going to look at the commercial future land use designation this evening. This land use designation consists of a broad array of commercial development, including individual commercial businesses that may exist along a highway corridor or a business district, as well as larger planned shopping centers and office parks. Limited high-density multifamily uses are also allowed to be mixed into commercial areas. Compatibility should be addressed by applying policies in LU113 in conjunction with a general development plan. And speaking of a general development plan, the applicants are proposing to rezon the property in order to develop the property with self-storage units, and this is the preliminary development plan that was submitted by the applicants. So you can see that there are several buildings proposed. The front portion of the property in this general area is planned for drainage, so the majority of the development would be situated from the middle to the rear portion of the property there. We have noted in the site characteristics review that there are also a couple of sinkholes located on the property, and there are also a few mature trees located on the property. Under site design and compatibility, under surrounding architectural features, we've noted that the surrounding area contains a mixture of one, two, three, and four-story buildings. We've also noted that the existing structures within Cherry Farms are comprised mainly of brick, stone, or other modern masonry materials. And under building orientation, staff suggests that any new structure be constructed with a front facade oriented toward Orange Court. Then on page three, proposed open space, we've noted that the proposed HB zone allows up to 90% lot coverage, so 10% green space, but the applicants have committed that a minimum of 30% green space would be provided on the property. This is in an area-specific policy area, within the boundary of the Scottsville Road corridor study, and so we have outlined the applicable recommendations from this study for your reference, and I'll go through those. The first one deals with building orientation. The proposed buildings are planned to face inward to the site, and the proposal does not comply with this recommendation. Number two deals with utility placement. The applicants have committed in development plan condition seven that all utility services will be located underground and complies with this recommendation. Number three relates to access. The applicants have stated in development plan condition number one that the site will be developed with a single access point to Orange Court and complies with this recommendation. Number four looks at building materials. The applicants stated in development plan condition number nine, that any visible facades of the office, and I'll point out that the office is located in this general area here. So for the office, it would be developed with brick, stone, or other modern masonry material. The applicants have not specified materials for the proposed storage buildings, but have stated that storage buildings facing Scottsville Road will be screened with evergreen trees. The planning commission should determine compliance with this recommendation. Number five looks at signage and states that all new signage should be monument style with a lower square footage cap, as well as a prohibition on LED signs. The proposal does not comply with this recommendation. The applicants have stated in their application that they are proposing to use the maximum sign height and square footage due to being a second-tier lot from Scottsville Road and the site being lower than Scottsville Road, and that a shorter sign would have obstructed views from Scottsville Road, as the, sorry, would have obstructed views from Scottsville Road as the future first-tier lot is developed. So if you look, there's a lot situated between this lot and Scottsville Road, so that's what they're referencing there. Number six states that billboards should be prohibited. The applicants have prohibited billboards in development plan condition number eight and complies with this recommendation. Number seven looks at outdoor storage. The applicants committed in development plan condition number two that there will be no outside storage of boats, trailers, or RVs, and complies with this recommendation. Number eight looks at screening of roof-level equipment. The applicants committed in development plan condition 10 that any roof-mounted HVAC would be screened with a parapet screen and complies with this recommendation. And then last, number nine deals with green space, and again, I mentioned earlier that they're proposing to develop the property with at least 30% green space in development plan condition four, and so they would also comply with this recommendation. Moving on to the remaining portion of the development plan conditions, I'm going to just look at the ones that I didn't go through just now in the Scottsville Road review. So number one, the site will be developed with a single, oh, sorry, nope, I need to jump to number three, I already did number one. Number three, internal travelways that are within the limits of the buildings that are adjacent to a common property line will be screened with a six-foot-high decorative fence with an evergreen planting. Number five, any sinkholes that may develop during construction will be mitigated prior to the construction of any building over top of the sinkhole. Number six, existing trees greater than six inches in diameter that are in good health will be preserved. Number nine, the visible facades of the office will be developed with brick, stone, or other modern masonry material. The storage buildings that face Scottsville Road will be screened with evergreen trees as generally shown on the rezoning exhibit B, which is this exhibit, and you can see those evergreen plantings here. And then number 11, all storage buildings will be single-story. The office may be developed as two-story. And then number 12, prohibited uses include parking that is not accessory to a specific use, heavy vehicle and manufactured home sales, mobile home sales, used car sales, except in conjunction with a new car dealership, bingo parlor, or any establishment conducting games of chance or a pawn shop other than charitable gaming, provided that this restriction shall not prohibit the sale of lottery tickets incidental to a business, adult entertainment, and any establishment selling or exhibiting pornographic materials. On page five, we have the focus 2030 category review. We've evaluated 18 items from the comprehensive plan, and we found that 12 of those items were in compliance, and there were six that the planning commission should determine compliance, so I will touch on those. The first one, LU113, deals with compatibility. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is compatible with the area. Number, or LU2, deals with quality of development. The planning commission should determine compliance with this item. The applicants committed in development plan condition number nine, that visible facades of the office will be developed with brick, stone, or other modern masonry material, but did not specify materials for the proposed storage buildings. Again, I had mentioned earlier that they did commit to screening the buildings closest to Scottsville Road as shown on the exhibit. Next, we have LU252, HN1, and HN1.3, which deal with infill development and character considerations for the area. The planning commission should determine if the proposal is an infill project that is compatible with the area and if it will maintain or improve the existing character of the area. And then we also have ED1, which deals with the local economy. The application may comply with this item. The planning commission should determine if the proposed development will help to diversify the local economy. And then with that, I'm just going to jump back to our points to consider on page one. Staff has noted that the proposal is consistent with the future land use map in the commercial category. The proposed development complies with the majority of the site characteristics review criteria. And then finally, the proposed general development plan complies with the majority of the review criteria for site design and compatibility and meets the minimum requirements in the zoning ordinance. I believe that is all for the staff report, but I know the applicants are here, and I'm also happy to answer any questions.
How tall of a sign are we looking at?
The zoning ordinance for highway business allows up to 30 feet in height.
Well, it doesn't comply. This, the monument style, they're asking for a 30-foot exemption?
So the recommendation from the Scottsville Road corridor study is just a recommendation. It's not a hard standard or a requirement that signs adhere to that recommendation. And so the applicants included in their application a reason as to why they would like to have just the standard sign you would find in highway business, which would be that 30-foot-tall sign, up to 150 square feet of sign-face area. But there's no requirement in the ordinance about whether or not it has to be monument style. It could be a pylon-style sign, and so that may be a better question that the applicant may be able to answer as far as the design of the sign that they have in mind, but the height would be able to go up to 30 feet.
The other existing properties on Cherry Farm land complied with the monument-style
Honestly, not sure. I know that they were developed before the adoption of the Scottsville Road corridor study, and there are several signs, just going back to Scottsville Road. In that commercial corridor there, there are several that do not have monument-style So I guess it's just up to you all. That was a recommendation in the study, just to consider for future development in this corridor, but it would be fair to say that there are other signs along Scottsville Road in that area that are not monument-style.
How tall is a two-story building?
Two stories, just depends on the height of each floor, I guess, probably around 30 feet. Is that a fair guess? Yeah.
I could, it's always a two-story building. My concern is, there's a lot in front of it, between it and Scottsville Road, and if they want this sign to face Scottsville Road, are we going to say that they can only have a one-story building on that other lot so you can see the sign? Or what would they want to do if there is a two-story building placed on that lot?
Well, this is actually located in a special area in Well, this is actually located in a special area in our zoning ordinance. It's located in our high-rise sign district, so in the event that they wanted to have a second sign, they would be eligible for a sign that's actually taller than 30 feet because it is in the high-rise district, similar to some of the hotels and other businesses along that corridor. You may notice that some of those have a freestanding sign that you'd see from Scottsville Road, but then you could also see it from the interstate and other areas, kind of in that vicinity. So, if they chose to have a high-rise sign, they would be able to do that as well.
One last question. Could you point to the buildings that are proposed to be brick?
Just going the wrong way. So, the office is this square portion here, kind of in this outline. So, the office, in development plan condition nine, they've stated that the visible facades of the office will be developed with brick, stone, or other modern masonry material. So, that portion of the development is the only portion that they've specified materials.
And refresh my memory on the requirement for the facade, for the exterior.
So, there's not a hard standard, it's just one of the recommendations in the Scottsville Road study. There's a recommendation that a building material requirement for both residential and non-residential development for facades facing Scottsville Road and possibly all roadways be considered.
Rachel, to your knowledge, is it fair to say that most of the commercial developments that we've had since that recommendation have complied with that suggestion?
Yes. That would be fair.
Commissioners, any other questions? Anyone in the audience have a question, or would you like to add anything?
Doing the development.
Could you give us, Mr. Spirit, your name and address?
James Bronson Spears, 990 Country Club Estates, Glasgow, Kentucky, 4241.
Swear to tell the truth. Thank you.
Yeah, we're looking at developing this, we're going to do it, it's going to be a very nice facility. It's going to be roughly 450 units, a $2 million project. With all the apartments going up in the area and that vicinity, all the multi-use housing and stuff, we look at, we did economic study, all the other storage units within a two-mile radius are about 90 to 95% occupancy. So, in consideration with the facade, I know you guys might be looking at that, as you know, we looked at doing the evergreens to maybe make the building look better, but we're willing to work with the commission if it requires anything different. But whatever we would be able to do there with evergreens, I think would make it look pretty good and cover up. It's going to be corrugated metal, it's going to be of a good color, it's not going to be crazy pink or greens, so it's not going to stand out crazy, so it's going to look good with the surroundings.
Since it's a corrugated metal construction, is it, would you give consideration to extending the brick facade on a couple of those buildings, in particular, the one that faces Scottsville Road?
We would consider that as an option if the commission requested. That, I think that's the main one, the long building that's connected to the office building, and there's another one which, I guess, would be the only other one would be up at the very top with that one corner facing the road, so.
And lastly, would you speak to your intent on the signage?
We're actually, our intent is to do a monument-style sign, roughly 30-foot-tall with 150 square foot of signage. In the instance that if somebody does come in front of us and builds a two- or three-story building on that other lot on Scottsville Road, we may revisit and put a larger sign if possible.
Would you consider, let me ask it this way, are you, is it your desire to attract traffic from Scottsville Road, or most of the others are doing monument-style signs that would be visible to Cherry Lane or Orange Court?
I would look at, as far as position sign, so would be able to probably maybe catty-cornered, maybe, to be seen from Scottsville Road and also Orange Court, so that's probably the best way, I think, to get visibility from Scottsville Road.
Would you consider a conforming sign?
A what?
A conforming sign.
Explain what that is to me, I guess.
Staff may have to do that, a sign that conforms to the recommendation for the Scottsville Road corridor.
The recommendation, it's pretty generic as to what it is. It just says that there's a suggestion that all new signage be monument-style, which I think you said that was what you're planning on, a monument-style sign, and then it just says with a lower square footage cap and prohibiting LED signs, that's the recommendation.
Currently have no intention to do an LED sign, correct? Okay, so what would we need to do to get this to comply with that recommendation?
It could be as simple as adding a development plan condition, just stating the intent of the style of the sign, monument-style, prohibiting an LED sign. There's not a recommendation on height, there's a recommendation on square footage, so I'm not sure what the planned square footage would be, but there would be an option to go lower than 150, that's the maximum in highway business, but it's not, I guess it's not a requirement, it's just a recommendation for the commission to consider.
Do you currently have a sign size in mind?
No, not really in mind, but I was thinking, you know, 10 by 15, sitting that far back from the road, I'd like to have a sign big enough to be visible from Scottsville Road now, if that would be possible, you know. I don't think 10 by 15 is that large, really, when you look at it, yeah.
So, ever so slightly smaller, then are we within those confines?
You would be, and I guess so. These are just, how many did we pick from the plan? There's nine applicable recommendations, so it's, I mean, it's possible that every application won't comply with every recommendation. It's just up to you all to determine kind of which ones you feel are most important, and so if signage is, you know, important to you, then I completely understand that, so.
I would make this recommendation, let's just say no LED and monument-style, would you commit to those two?
What about your recommendation about the brick on the front of the buildings?
So, would you be willing to do brick on those two buildings that we described?
Brick or something comparable to brick, maybe a backer board or something, a hardy board or something like that, you think would look good?
As long as it's cementitious.
Right.
Like a hardy plank would be, would be an acceptable product as well.
I think we'd be open to that if the commission would request it.
Will you have a CMU block, or will it all be steel? Will the back of those be block, or will the whole thing be steel already?
It's going to be, the whole thing be steel.
Okay, all right. So, yeah, if you were, as long as it's cementitious.
Do you have any idea placement of the sign?
Excuse me, ma'am.
Do you have any idea where you're planning to place the sign?
The sign?
Down here in this corner, or?
Well, I don't know if I can do this. I'm looking, probably the sign will probably go roughly to this area, or up here, more likely it would be in this area here if possible.
I didn't see where you.
Sorry.
Close to the end.
It would go almost to where you pull into the property, either there, where the scene, what this is right here? Or possibly here, more than likely it would go here.
I forgot to tape one staple.
Getting access.
Let me see if I can get back on top of this. So, Mr. Spears, I'm sorry. I'm looking at binding element number nine, and it's the one that deals with the facades of the office. And so, what I hear you saying is that you now agree that the visible facades of the office and storage units facing Scottsville Road will be developed with brick, stone, or other modern masonry material?
Yes, we'd be able to do that.
Okay. Then a new binding element, number 13, will read, no LED signs will be permitted, signage shall be of, shall be a monument-style sign. And I didn't hear any height limitation.
That's correct. Just a monument style.
Okay. Is that agreeable?
It's agreeable.
Commissioners, have anything else? Thank you, Mr. Spears.
You're welcome.
No other questions, we'll call for a motion.
Make a motion to approve the zoning map amendment together with a condition upon a general development plan, document number 2019-15ZBG, based upon testimony and documents presented at this public hearing, a proposed zoning map amendment is consistent with adopted focus 2030 comprehensive plan, as demonstrated by its compliance with the objective and actions presented in the staff report. Therefore, the proposed zoning map amendment is in agreement with the adopted comprehensive plan. Further, I request that this motion include a summary of evidence and testimony presented by the witnesses at this public hearing.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
We need to add on that after the word staff report and changes made tonight in order to have the correct.
We don't usually change the motion where there've been amendments to the binding elements on the floor, we rely upon the record and the sworn testimony to document that, but thank you.
Commissioner Vitale?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Balance?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Rich?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Clark?
Yes.
Commissioner Coppinger?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Volkert? Commissioner Graham?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Gay?
Yes, ma'am.
Commissioner Warren?
Ma'am.
Commissioner Madison?
Yes, ma'am.
Chair Houston?
Yes, ma'am. Motion passed, we will send it forward.
And Ms. Clark, I know you know this, but just for everyone else, of course, we'll have the applicant bring us a new set of binding elements with these changes in it, and we'll have them signed.
Let's stop the motion needed to be, thanks.
Mr. Patterson, do you have?
No real new business, just wish Chair Runner a speedy recovery. She had some surgery, and that's why she's not here tonight. She might be absent for one or two meetings as she recovers, but we just wish her the best.
No other business? We'll adjourn.